Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome guys to the LaFouche Parish School Board Office. My name is Dean Guidry. I am the Communications Specialist for the District and also in charge of honoring our Students of the Year. Before we get started, let's just give them all a big round of applause. Pardon me, I'm gonna turn my back on you. I had to give them instructions, okay? And then I'll introduce it to our Superintendent. Alright guys, congratulations. I'm so glad that you guys made it, okay? All the way from wherever you had to come from. Alright, so tonight, this is what we're gonna do. You guys, your names are going to be called by our supervisory staff. Ms. Nancy Kuro, okay? Ms. Nancy? And Mr. Kenny Delcum. They're gonna call your names. You're going to come up here, you're going to greet the Superintendent and our Board President, Miss Brooke Huddleston. When you get here, they're gonna hand you your trophy. I want you to look at that camera, that iPhone, and I want you to wave it, because people at home are watching you, okay? And then turn around and face the crowd and I'll take a picture of you with the Board President and the Superintendent. Got it? Can we do it?
Let's try that again.
Okay. Got it?
Yes!
Awesome. Let's do it. Okay, without any further ado, let me introduce you to our new Superintendent, Mr. Garrett Martin.
If you had any real authority, it'd dial up better weather for everybody driving to Thibodeaux tonight, but thank you all for being here. All the amazing kids we have are a testament to the hard work that so many of you put into your children and the sacrifices that you all make. I was just talking to Ms. Boujwa about my wife and I's commitment to our own children and what that means, driving them to piano, dance, cheer, soccer, fill in the blank, right? So this has been your life for so long, but this is the culmination of all your work and their work. So tonight is a celebration. Being here amongst these special kids is what it's all about, and I know the Board is elated as well as I am. So thank you all for coming, share this celebration of talent that we have in LaFouche Parish, and let's get started.
This time, our Board President, Brooke Huddleston, will come up here, and as soon as we're ready to go, you guys can start with the names.
Good evening. I have the District's honor of recognizing the 2019-20 LaFouche Parish School District Elementary School Student of the Year winners. Ms. Madeline Ellis. Ashley and Daniel Ellis, and she is a student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary. The son of Blair Robisho, student at Bayou Buck Elementary. Cameron Hathwell, son of Joey. And he's a student at Bayou Community Academy.
Right here, buddy.
Isabella Salinas, daughter of Jose Salinas and Shereen Encore. Isabella is a student at St. John Washington Elementary. James Claymore, son of Nikki and Joan Claymore. James is a student at Jack Day Elementary. Phoebe Hillman, daughter of Jenny Hillman and student at Galeno Elementary. Bailey Thompson, daughter of Keith and Kelly Thompson, student at Golden Meadow Upper Elementary. Okay, let's go. Straight back. They're everywhere. Good job.
Okay, so now we're gonna go ahead and announce our Middle School Students of the Year. From Bayou Blue Middle School, Haley Saban, daughter of Jai and Harriet Saban. From Bayou Unity Academy, Samia Lashery, daughter of Anna Maria Ashmally Lashery. From East Thibodeau Middle School, Taylor Boudreau, the daughter of Dickinson and Lydia Boudreau. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Evan Louvier, the son of Peter and Bonnie Louvier. From Raceland Middle School, Annalise Rios. So I was just told that Annalise...
Yeah.
Is that what that is? Oh my God! From Six Four Middle School, Claire Bolton, the daughter of Mark and Tyler. From the Virtual Academy of LaFouche, Madeline Tufts, daughter of Clark and Julianne. From Central LaFouche High School, Sarah Hudson, daughter of David and Deanna Hudson. From South LaFouche High School, Megan Chassault, daughter of Chet and Lana Chassault.
I will be announcing the 2019-20 LaFouche Parish School District Elementary School Student of the Year winner. And I just wanna remind you that you are all rising stars and winners, and we are proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations to Ms. Blakely Fowlue.
Should we get it facing the right way? Congratulations, Blakely. Congratulations. Evan is from LaRose Cut Off Middle School, son of Peter and Bonnie Louvier.
Look over here!
Can we get more of a good, you got it?
One more!
He's bored most of the time. Okay, and the High School Parish Student of the Year. Megan Chassault. Megan is from South LaFouche High School, daughter of Chet and Lana Chassault.
Well, I just wanna reiterate what Ms. Kiro said before we began, is that all of the students here tonight are so worthy of the accolades and the celebration that we've given them tonight, so a round of applause for all of our students. I'll close with, you know, the many years that I've been doing this, I've always heard the Superintendent say, "These kids probably deserve a bite to eat here in Thibodeaux", so treat them well, be safe going home, and thank you so much for what you've done to support LaFouche Parish Schools and your students, and it looks like I forgot something.
So all I need to, like, what you're parents, so the top three winners, I need to talk to you guys before you leave tonight, because we have a writing prompt that has to be completed tomorrow.
The work begins! Thank you all so much, have a great night!
Would you like to call the meeting to order? Indication from Ms. Tina Babin, District 1, and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Al Archer, District 13.
Evan and Father, we come to you tonight asking for your blessings and support as we conduct the business of our beloved school district. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work and help us to encourage each other to be the very best we can be. Let us lead with integrity and let us always put the needs of others ahead of our own. Keep our students safe and bless our remarkable leaders and employees endlessly with their passion and dedication to LaFouche. Finally, never let us forget to put you at the center of everything we do so that your will is done. We ask all of this in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call this evening, we have an announcement by Mr. Troy Duprent, Board Member from District 15.
Superintendent Board Members, please accept this letter as formal notification that I'm resigning from my position as School Board Member for District 15. My last day was February 4, 2020. I'm saddened that I must resign, but I'm incredibly grateful for the public electing me to this position. I've greatly enjoyed and appreciated opportunities I've had here for the past year. I have learned that making a clear, conscious, moral decision goes a long way and moves us forward. This is one of the things that I will take with me throughout my new career. I wanna thank all the Board Members and staff for guiding me through the past year. I also want to thank the men and women who make LaFouche Parish School System rise above all others. Without you, we the Board are nothing. Board Members, I wish all of you continued growth and success in your careers, as well as continued growth and success as a LaFouche Parish student.
Also, I was told a little while ago that I have to supply nits for everyone, because I have some hidden under here, so each one of you right now has a pack of, yes?
Remember our faces as we go through Golden Meadow.
Thank you.
as fun as the Board, not only for Board meetings, but conversations and throughout our committee meetings as well, so thank you very much. We've enjoyed it.
Thank you.
As a result, we now have a vacancy in District 15. Louisiana allows the School Board to fill the vacancy if done so within 20 days after the vacancy occurs. After consult with the Commission's Division of the State Office, we have concluded that we must fill the vacancy no later than Wednesday, February 26. I'd like to invite anyone to submit to me their names if interested in the vacant position. It will be posted on the District's webpage with a deadline to submit resumes by 2:00 PM on Thursday, February 13. All resumes should be addressed to Brooke Huddleston, myself, the Board President, and can or can be mailed to the address of the School Board Office. Thank you again, Mr. Duprent. We'll have roll call.
Ms. Babin?
Here.
Ms. Huddleston?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Pativa?
Here.
Dr. Baraud?
Here.
Dr. Guyot?
Here.
Ms. Boujwa?
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dupren?
Here.
Mr. Schwest?
Here.
Mr. Plazos?
Here.
Mr. DePlantis?
Here.
Mr. Lafont?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
We have accorded to approval of Board Consent Agenda. A, approval of Board Consent Agenda Items. B, minutes of regulars, Board Meeting held January 8, 2020. C, minutes of Special Board Meeting held January 14, 2020. D, minutes of Special Board Meeting held January 14, 2020. D, minutes of special board meeting held January 16 of 2020. E, minutes of special board meeting held January 21 of 2020. F, insurance committee meeting held January 22, 2020. G, finance committee meeting held January 22, 2020. H, minutes of academic committee meeting held January 22, 2020. I, superintendent's evaluation committee meeting held January 23 of 2020. J, minutes of policy and procedure committee meeting held January 23 of 2020. K, minutes of transportation committee meeting held January 23 of 2020. L, minutes of land and facilities management committee meeting held January 23, 2020. M, minutes of advisory committee meeting held January 23, 2020. And N, of services in schools, Louisiana School Lunch Week, February 3 through 7 of 2020. And National School Breakfast Week, March 2 through 6 of 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Patitas, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any public comment or participation? Any board comment or participation? I'd like to say it's been a verigism, ma. If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Approval of insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held January 22, 2020, Mr. Barry Plazos.
A, to approve the removal quote from John Norris in column number 8, with a total proposed premium of $296,841. And to reject uninsured motors, reject terrorism coverage, and to authorize the superintendent to sign all documents related to the removal, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazos, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. Is there any public participation? Any board conversation? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
B, to approve Mr. Norris's recommendation to include endorsements to ensure protection on construction projects and use of facilities.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazos, second by Ms. Mary Patita. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
C, to approve the one-year contract with Norris Risk Management LLC commencing on February 8, 2020, to provide liability insurance consulting and verification services with an annual fee of $36,909, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazos, second by Mr. Tyler Dupre. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Four, approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held January 22, 2020, Dr. Mary Brode.
A, to award the highest score proposal received from TransformX for E-rate Category 2 products and services for a 36-month term with two 12-month voluntary extensions, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Brode, second by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any public participation? Any discussion from the board? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Five, approval of superintendent's evaluation committee recommendations as per meeting held January 23, 2020, Ms. Mary Patita.
Yes, after the meeting of the committee, the evaluation committee, the following changes were approved. As we looked at the form, and we realized that there was no column for not observed. So, that, if you looked at the attachment to this item, this agenda item, you'll see that it now has a no-not-observed column to the left of number four. Of course, this will not be calculated into the score. So, the directions say that we would total up the standards, and then we would divide by the, excuse me, we would total up all of the, well, they're called, indicators, excuse me, all of the indicators, and then divide by the number. But if you have a zero, that number will not be calculated. So, we might be dividing by 10 in some cases, but then in nine in other cases. So, that gives us a little more leeway if you do not observe. Of course, we're going to talk some more about it, how you should be able to see all of the indicators somewhere along the line in the six months' time. Also, the rating scale in the back, this is Mr. Dupre's suggestion, that it mirror the scale of it, it reflects the scale that it used by the teacher evaluation. So, those changes were made to the highly effective, proficient, emerging, and ineffective. Also, we would, we have all of the, the page in the back, the glossary is not included, because we're going, the committee's going to go back and talk about that, to give us an idea, to give the board some direction as to what highly efficient and all of those are proficient are actually meaning. So, we'll talk about that. And also, we'll be working with Dean to come up with an Excel spreadsheet, so that when we do the evaluation, we'll be able to do it in a worksheet. We'll tally it up for you, and divide it, and the answer, the amount will be right there. So, it'll make it much easier, and so that will be part of our next meeting. And so, anyway, I would like for you to pay your consideration to the changes that we have discussed and move up from the committee.
So, the motion is to approve their revisions to the superintendent's evaluation form and rating scale.
Correct.
Move by, motion by Ms. Mary Patitas, second by Ms. Valerie Boujoua. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Five, excuse me, six, approval of policy committee recommendations as per meeting held January 23, 2020, Mr. Ray Bernard.
Yeah, Madam President, the following policies have been reviewed by our committee and have been approved by our legal advisor. I would like, with your permission, I'd like to read all three of them together, and if there are any questions, you can stop as we go through. Policy G A E A A, sexual harassment. G B N, dismissal of employees. And G B R L, holidays. I move they be accepted as read.
Motion by Mr. Ray Bernard, second by Mr. Barry Plazos. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Seven, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held January 23, 2020, Mr. Randy Schwest.
Thank you, Madam President. A, to accept a change order to add seven additional days to the contract, six for November 2019, and one for December 2019, due to inclement weather for re-roofing project at WS La Farge Elementary School, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Barry Plazos. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? Mr. Plazos?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say to the contracts, I said this in the land and facilities committee meeting, thank you, because these extra seven days, although it sounds like a lot, considering the weather that we had in November, December. I mean, you probably could have asked for a triple that it probably got. So, again, thank you to the contractor for doing the work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Any other board comments? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
B, to accept a change order to mount, now to exceed $25,000 for the extra material and labor, plus an additional five days to be added to the contract in order to fill the low spots on the existing roof for the re-roofing project at WS La Farge Elementary School and take appropriate action, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Tina Babin. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
C, to accept a request from Ms. Angela Winstell to waive the use of facilities fee for the American Cancer Society to hold a dance on March 20, 2020 at Galliano Elementary School and take appropriate action, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Dr. Mary Brode. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Randy?
Vote it.
No.
Well.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a y.
Motion passed unanimously.
D, to accept the high bid in the amount of $1,000 annually, $10.75 per acre for Matthew Richdale for hunting and fishing privileges on Section 27 and 33, Comma Township, 16 South, Comma Range, 21 East, Lake Salvador area, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Henry Lafont. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
E, to accept the high bid in the amount of $500 annually from Mr. Gerald Gadrick for campsite privileges VR-7 on Section 16, Comma Township, 19 South, Comma Range, 22 East, Bayou Raphael area, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
F, to authorize to advertise for bids when contract documents are complete for the demolition of the old Rose Cut Elementary School, two-story building, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. Is there any public participation? Any board participation? Yes, sir.
I think we need for the statue, Ray Bernard. I'll just go for everyone.
You would definitely discuss, he was the first principal there. If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
G, to authorize to advertise for bids when contract documents are complete for the safety renovations project, safety tax five, at Central La Fouch High School and South La Fouch High School, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Barry Plazos. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
H, to award the most responsive and responsible proposal received for a five-year term for grass-cutting services to Greenscape of Louisiana for the services for Central and South La Fouch areas, and to four-rate contracting group for the North La Fouch areas, so moved.
Motion by Ms. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously. Eight, to receive advisory committee recommendations as per meeting held February 3, 2020, Ms. Tina Babin.
Yes, I would like to request a report on board member compensation. Currently, it's very concerning that there's a lot of misinformation to the public stating salaries, retirement, insurance benefits, and internet services. I feel it would be essential to remind the public that we are continuing work toward deduction, have cut a bunch of the compensation, and we have our top authority for the tax being passed in there.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. Mr. Morton, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I just want to echo what she said, you know, the board has moved from a compensation package of $800 a month to $400 a month, has removed health insurance benefits, has turned in laptops, and does not have internet service at their home. So, the elected board members that are in this room tonight do not represent folks that are being paid anything more than $400 a month. In the case of the president, I believe it's five percent. And so, I think it's important to remind the public that as we move forward towards seeking a sales tax in May, because many times there's misconceptions about our elected officials. And so, to clarify that, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morton. Nine, new business. Eight, introduce new administrators, Mr. Jared Morton.
Yes, so we have two administrators that are new to the positions that they're serving in, at their respective schools. The first administrator I'd like to introduce is somebody I've worked side by side with for a while now, and she's going to be the new assistant principal at Central La Fouch High School. And she's sitting next to her new principal, Mr. Chris Alden, and that's Ms. Tanya Rishor.
I just want to thank you for allowing me to return to Central, and I look forward to working with Mr. Arnold and faculty and staff.
Yes, ma'am. And the second administrator we're introducing tonight, along with her new principal, is in the audience tonight, Ms. Amy LeBlanc. Ms. Amy?
Thank you for this opportunity. I am so excited to have the opportunity to work with Dr. Lorraine, the faculty, and staff. the faculty and staff at Galliano, the students in the community. I think my future looks bright. I'm G E S.
You're right.
That's only because I trained her.
I knew you were going to say something. I knew it. But I'm going to get the final train.
You're a great person.
She is. We love her already.
B, to approve, consider approving the calendar for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty more school year, Mr. Barry.
Superintendent Morton, President Colston, members of the board. Each school district must adopt a school calendar for the upcoming year. State law mandates a school calendar that must feature a minimum of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty minutes of instructional time for students. This equates to a minimum of three hundred and sixty minutes per day. It also mandates a hundred and eighty-two working days for teachers. If you would refer to our proposed calendar for the twenty-twenty-one school year, you will see that it features sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-five minutes of instructional time, that's three hundred and seventy-five minutes per day, which is well above the minimum instructional minutes required. This allows us to build five days emergency time so that if schools have to close due to emergency situations, we will not have to make up those days. Please be aware that in the event of school closures beyond the five days, holidays could be eliminated at the discretion of the superintendent to meet the minimum number of instructional days. Professional days will once again consist of whole days. There will be a total of five professional days, beginning on August third and fourth, September eighth, October thirteenth, and January nineteenth. The calendar also features two teacher records days, one on Wednesday, August fifth, twenty twenty, and one on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. With this total, our teachers will have the mandated one eighty-two working days. Students' first day at school will be on Thursday, August sixth, twenty twenty, and the last day at school, Monday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. The holiday schedule is coded in pink. Finally, the calendar has been approved by our superintendent and curriculum committee and are presented to you for adoption for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
Thank you, Mr. Babbin. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar? Motion by Mr. Barry Plazos, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any public participation? Any board participant, any board discussion?
Yes, I thought the last day was Friday, May twenty-second. No?
Yeah, and with the records date of the twenty-fifth, but that's still before Memorial Day, right? So Memorial Day on this year is actually the thirty-first.
That's right.
Very good.
That's why you were asking.
Yes, that's exactly, and I know our teachers will appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Benard. Any further discussion?
Statue. Statue.
Mr. Benard, that would be one handsome statue. They had a motion and a second. There was no public discussion. Any further board discussion? Mr. Dufrin?
Thank you. So one of the policies that we just adopted was so that students and faculty and staff can have off one election day. So they will have that off this year because schools are being used as voting precincts. I also want to thank Ms. Annette Fontana, our clerk of court, who has been going to the high schools to help register students to become registered voters and participate in this election. So hopefully that holiday won't just be to sleep in length but also to be an active participant in the voting process. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dufrin. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passage unanimously. C, to consider authorizing advertisement for bids on the following items by the child nutrition department throughout the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year as the need arises in compliance with the regulations of the State Department of Education. A, milk and milk products. B, bread. C, all other food items. D, janitorial and paper products. E, cleaning of grease traps. F, concentrated detergents. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Tina Babbin, second by Ms. Randy Schwest, Ms. Lauren Fletcher.
Superintendent Morton, and President Colston, members of the board. I think we've all been around, we've all been here at least one year. After year of February, I come before you to get your approval. This is a formality so that we can go out with all of our bids for all of our food supplies for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Is there any public participation? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. We're going to do a hand vote, all in favor. Motion passage unanimously, thirteen votes. D, to consider authorizing advertisement for bids on small equipment and large equipment need by the child nutrition department throughout the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year as the need arises in compliance with current bid laws. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Petita, second by Mr. Barry Plazos, Ms. Lauren Fletcher.
I think that's applicable. Just to give a little statistics, as you well know, we feed around four thousand five hundred students breakfast every day and around ten thousand five hundred lunch meals every day. So this process starts for us to your ramp. We start working on menu planning at least six to seven months in advance, start coming out with our bids. We will be advertising for bids sometime in April, and then we open that first weekend day. Just kind of have words. Have you had any questions? Go ahead, ask them.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Is there any public participation? Charles Silver.
Good.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passage unanimously. Three, for your resolutions. A, Mr. Albert King, retired school bus driver, Ms. Cheryl Thomas.
Mr. Albert King was hired by the LaFugee Parish School District on August seventeenth, nineteen ninety-two as a school bus driver. Mr. King retired September tenth, twenty twelve, having served the LaFugee Parish District for a total of twenty years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. B, Ms. Anna Louise Roederich, retired teacher, Ms. Tina Babbin.
Ms. Anna Louise Roederich is hired by the LaFugee Parish School District on August seventeenth, nineteen fifty-two as a teacher at Chaffey Elementary School. Ms. Roederich also taught at Tewafoosa Upper Elementary School, Tewafoosa Junior High School, and West Tewafoosa Junior High School during her career. Ms. Roederich retired on June first, nineteen seventy-four, having served the LaFugee Parish School District for a total of twenty-two years. I move that a resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Babbin. C, Ms. Connie St. Pierre, child nutrition technician, Mr. Randy Schwest.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Connie St. Pierre was hired by the LaFugee Parish School District on August fifth, two thousand five as a child nutrition technician at Central LaFugee High School. Ms. St. Pierre passed away on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty. She served in the LaFugee Parish School District for a total of fourteen and a half years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page in our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Schwest. D, Ms. Ruth Matherne, retired child nutrition technician, Mr. Drew DePlantis.
Ms. Ruth Matherne was hired by the LaFugee Parish School District on August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-seven as a child nutrition technician at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Ms. Matherne retired on December seventeenth, nineteen ninety-four, having served the LaFugee Parish School District for a total of sixteen and a half years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. DePlantis. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and were recorded on a special page in our minute book. Eleven, tenant updates for future meetings. Insurance committee, Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. B, finance committee meeting, Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Academics committee meeting, Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Policy and procedure committee meeting, Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. Transportation committee meeting, Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. Land and facilities management committee meeting, Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. G, advisory committee, Monday, March second, two thousand twenty. And H, regular school board meeting, Wednesday, March fourth, two thousand twenty. Due to the LSBA convention, we have moved all Tuesday committee meetings to the Thursday, February, to Thursday, February twentieth. Is there any further discussion from the board? If not, we are adjourned. Excuse me, Mr. Plazos, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say one thing. Mr. Dufrin, it was truly an honor to serve people out here and the service that he provided on our parish, our educators, administrators, and our students, most of all. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Ms. Petita?
I just want to remind the people at home that are watching and the people in the audience that it seems like we went through this long agenda very, very quickly, but we were, just about all of us have been at all of the committee meetings and listened to the discussions and brought up all of the pros and the cons of these. So I just want to let people know that even though the agenda looked very long, it looks like we just ran through it. There's been a lot of discussion with it. So just want to remind you that.
Plenty of phone calls and late nights at the school board office, definitely. Before we adjourn, I think Ms. Cheryl Thomas is going to miss Mr. Dufrin both of those.
Yes, my hell, just not saying that because I don't want to cry. Yeah, he was a good friend to me on my party. And he would cut on my computer. And the mint started with him putting mints under my tray every time I was here, and I really truly missed his death.
Hey, I didn't know that.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Anybody else? Ms. LaFon, I know it was a short stay for him on the board, but he's a good friend from back home.
Well, I've known Troy for a long time and from my, from when I was an admiral for the Loma Fushon Talking Road, he was working at the port in his health position for the Loma Fushon Talking Road. He's been very active in our community, not only with the school board, but in many areas. And he's been a tremendous asset to our community. Congratulations, Troy. Enjoy and please recall.
Just nothing further, we are adjourned.